Washington County Board of Education. We have six members present, and that does constitute a quorum. This evening, we have Jackson Kwok, a fifth grade student at Jonathan Hager Elementary School, who's going to come forward to the microphone and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello. Thank you. Hello, Jackson.
Hello.
Thank you for being here this evening.
You're very welcome.
Do you have, do you have someone here with you that you would like to introduce to the audience and to the board?
Yeah, with me, I have my dad.
And his name?
Ricky.
Ricky. Good evening, Ricky. Thanks for being here and for bringing Jackson. And someone else?
Um, not just him.
How about the lady beside your dad?
That's my vice principal, Ms. Roth.
Hello, Ms. Roth. Thank you for being here. So, Jackson, we had a little chat before the start of the meeting, and you told me that you have some interest in the arts.
Yes, I do.
Could you tell us a little bit about your interest?
Well, I enjoy, like, vocal instruments, like piano, viola, just, yeah.
Well, that's, that's very nice. And so, you're a singer?
Yeah.
Do you like to sing? Do you have a particular type of music you enjoy singing?
Not really.
Not really? Just anything?
Yeah, just anything.
Okay. Could you tell us something about Jonathan Hager? Anything there that you especially enjoy?
I enjoy a lot of things.
You do? Well, that's good, that's good to know. Anything you'd like to share with us?
Like, the students and staff there are really nice, and it, and they are nice to collaborate with.
That's, that's very nice to hear, very nice to hear. Do you have any questions for us this evening? Anything you'd like to ask board members?
Not for the top of the line.
Okay, it's okay if you don't. Colleagues, do you have anything that you would like to ask Jackson?
Do you have a favorite subject in school, Jackson?
I like all of them.
You like, oh, that's great. How about when you're outside of school, besides your music, do you have any other pastimes or hobbies that you do?
Just music. Yeah.
It's okay.
Do you have a favorite book that you've read more than once?
There's this, like, series called Humphrey, and I really like it.
Ah, what's it called, Humphrey?
Yeah, Humphrey.
Oh, okay, great.
Well, Jackson, we thank you so very much for coming this evening and for leading us in the pledge and the moment of silence, and we wish you all the best back at Jonathan Hager. Continue to do good work, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we could have a motion for approval of the agenda for this evening?
Madam President, I would like to move for approval of the work session minutes that are dated Tuesday.
Mrs. Fisher? We need to approve the agenda. Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer.
Jumping the gun.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. So, the motion is to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. And now, Mrs. Fisher. We'll have approval of the minutes.
Madam President, I move to approve the work session minutes that are dated Tuesday, February 6th of 2018.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Any additions or corrections to that set of minutes? All those in favor? Mrs. Murray, were you going to?
Yes.
All right, so that's unanimous approval of those.
Madam President, I would like to approve the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, February 6th of 2018.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any additions or corrections to the closed session minutes? All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Is that it?
No, finally, I would like to move for the approval of the business meeting minutes dated the same date, Tuesday, February 6th.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any additions or corrections to the business meeting minutes? If not, all those in favor of approving those, and that is unanimous. Thank you. That brings us to public comment. This evening, we have seven individuals signed up for public comment, and before I call the first person forward, I'd like to read from Board Policy KD. Under Policy Statement and Procedures, Procedures Number One. Each person wishing to address the Board of Education is encouraged, but not required, to sign up prior to the meeting, and may address any topic concerning Washington County Public Schools, except personnel or student matters, which clearly identify an individual or individuals. Each speaker may speak up to five minutes. And this evening, we have Mr. Bickford as timekeeper. Mr. Bickford comes equipped with two signs. One is a yield sign that he will display when you have thirty seconds of your five minutes remaining, and a stop sign, which will indicate that your five minutes has elapsed. Our first speaker, first commenter, is Matt Mixer, is that right? Moser, I'm sorry. That is an OS. Thank you.
Members of the board, my name is Matt Moser, and I work for Washington County Public Schools in the IT department. Most of you know me, and we see each other fairly frequently because I work here at the central office, typically the one behind the camera, but tonight, I've come to the other side of the camera to speak to you as a member of the community. As someone in the IT field now for almost ten years, I'm a big-time advocate for the latest technology. In fact, every few months, I get on a kick about some new tech that we need, and I drive my wife crazy talking about it until I've convinced her to let me buy it. To that point, I of all people can assure you that I understand the community's desire for better cell coverage at the North High end. I am here tonight, however, to persuade you to reconsider the placement of that proposed cell tower at the North High School. So, here with me tonight, if you haven't already noticed, I'm sure everyone has, but my wife Casey is here with my two-year-old son Elijah, and my three-month-old son Levi is also talking. Our home is located at 1050 St. Clair Street. The corner of my house is eighty-two feet from the North High property. My children's bedroom window is just two-hundred-and-fifty feet from the location of the proposed tower. As you know, this will be an eighty-three-by-thirty-five-foot fenced-in area, which will house the electronic equipment, the fans, the generators, and up we'll go the one-hundred-and-fifteen-foot tower. This is being masked as a sign, but from my deck, anywhere in the backyard and patio of this compound and tower will be my new view, along with the twenty-four-seven hum and the twenty-four-seven pulsing of radio frequency radiation toward my home. Respectfully, to say that there's no reported evidence of possible health effects from living within the close proximity of a cell tower is simply choosing to turn a blind eye to the facts. There are mountains of growing evidence from the world's leading scientists warning of the dangers, and I'm just going to quickly go through some of them. A compelling study of two-hundred-and-seventy men and two-hundred-and-sixty women living near a cell tower showed an increase in headaches and sleep disruption the closer they lived to a cellphone base station. Next one here, the International Association of Firefighters has successfully lobbied to be excluded from the placement of cellphone towers at fire stations and firefighters. Near these cell towers showed symptoms of memory loss, intermittent confusion and weakness, and abnormal brain function. To quote directly from their website regarding their official position on cell towers, says this, "The internationally known experts in the field of RF radiation research have shown that RF transmission of the type used in digital cellular antennas and phones can have critical effects on cell cultures, animals, and people in laboratories, and also have found epidemiological evidence, meaning studies of communities, not in laboratories, were serious health effects at non-thermal levels, where the intensity of this RF radiation was too low to cause heating, and they have found the following: increased cell growth of brain cancer cells, a doubling of the rate of lymphoma in mice, more childhood leukemia in children exposed to RF, changes in sleep patterns in REM, REM-type sleep, headaches caused by RF radiation exposure, and neurological changes, including changes in the blood-brain barrier, changes in cellular morphology, including cell death, changes in neurotransmitters, which affect motivation and pain perception, cytogenic effects which can affect cancer, Alzheimer's, and neurodegenerative diseases. Additionally, in 2016, the National Toxicology Program conducted a $25-million multi-year study, which just concluded at the National Institute of Health, which linked cellular radiation to brain and heart tumors. And the last statistic here is, as of January of 2017, two-hundred-and-twenty-four scientists from forty-one nations have signed an international appeal to the United Nations and the World Health Organization to improve the protection of the public from harm caused by the radiation produced by many wireless sources, including cellphone base stations and wireless broadcast antennas." They quote, "Numerous recent scientific publications have shown that electric magnetic fields affect living organisms at levels well below most international and national guidelines. Effects including increased cancer risk, cellular stress, increase in harmful free radicals, genetic damages, structural and functional changes of the reproductive system, learning and memory deficits, neurological disorders, and negative impacts on general well-being in humans." So, members of the board, I am begging you on the most personal, friend-to-friend, humane level possible to put yourselves in my shoes. If you were faced with this evidence, and you lived in my house, and have to look after these two boys and my beautiful wife, would you want the cell tower constantly pumping RF radiation out twenty-four-seven, two-hundred-and-fifty feet from where they play all day, and you sleep at night? I've got one minute. Just the possibility that this evidence is true, I believe is reason enough to take caution and reconsider placement of this tower. To conclude, I understand that the revenue from this deal will be a great thing for Washington County Public Schools in a time where we could use the funds, and legally, you may still technically have every right to place this tower where it's proposed, but I came to you to speak in front of all my peers in the community to plead with you to make the right moral decision, to do what's right for my family, for my neighbors, the community, and of course, the students and teachers at North High School. Please reconsider the placement of this tower to a less residential area with less risk to our community and our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. The next person I have signed up is John, John Kralka?
Kroka.
Kroka. Good evening, Mr. Kroka.
This is thirty seconds left, and this means you're done.
Thank you, and pardon my raspy voice, I'm getting over a bit of a cold here. The members of the board and the Committee on Diversity are to be commended for their efforts on the important issue of diversity in our schools. Increasing the understanding of the benefits of diversity and the need for tolerance and respect for all are of great value to our entire community. It is important to identify the magnitude of the issues and problem related to diversity in Washington County Public Schools, the specific goals of the program, and metrics for determining outcomes. I have two general questions for the board. How effectively have the measures implemented so far been working? And secondly, what measures will be made and evaluated to ensure that implemented practices result in improved outcomes? Without a system for evaluating outcomes, we cannot be sure that the Washington County Public Schools' efforts in this area are working effectively, and how they may be improved. Surveys and other evaluations must include teachers, staff, students, administrators, and others involved in our educational system. Perspective studies must be part of the evaluation of changes in employee hiring and retention, as well as perceptions, attitudes, and behaviors. Racial diversity is a critically important component of this program, but it must also include considerations of gender, culture, religion, physical ability and appearance, autism, learning abilities, gender identification, sexual orientation, and other characteristics of our diverse society. Given the incidence of bullying and other forms of discrimination against lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender students, and their physical and psychological consequences, it is troubling that the needs of LGBTQ students are not even mentioned in this report. I wish to make the following recommendations to the board. Hold public meetings to allow additional stakeholder input for members of the community before implementing committee's recommendations. Two, perform surveys to determine the status of diversity-issued problems in Washington County Public Schools, and establish a system for evaluating outcomes of the board's diversity recommendations. Three, review curricula and policies that have been effective in other school systems and communities in promoting diversity in hiring and changing outcomes in staff, administrators, and students in terms of attitude and behaviors. It is not essential for all people to like or approve of everyone in the community, but we must all live and work together. Respect and tolerance must be woven into the fabric of education for all students in Washington County. Thank you, and I've included resources in my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Kroka. Chris Mackley.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Michael. My name's Chris Mackley, and I'm currently a sophomore at Williamsburg High School. Tonight, I sit before you as not just a student, but a candidate for the student member of the board, where if elected, I would succeed the role that Ibrahim Diallo is serving now, although he could not make it tonight. I come here today to address a very insistent part of WCPS students' daily life, their safety and well-being. I read the public letter that Superintendent Michael wrote to students and families of WCPS, and I want to thank you, Dr. Michael, for prioritizing our safety. While I realize the huge amount of WCPS students support for the never-again gun violence movement, I'm very much aware that gun regulations are totally out of the hands of the Board of Ed and even that of the student member. On the other hand, WCPS does have total control of its student assistance program, or SAT for short. As we heard at last month's public board meeting from a parent whose student was failed by the SAT program, it has its flaws. Although we may not know all the details about what specifically took place with her son, I have my own experience with the program. In the past few months, I referred a friend of mine to the counselors for suicidal thoughts and actions. Although that student is doing better now, the process could have and should have worked much better. That student openly shared with me their frustrations and dislikes about the SAT program and how it functioned, to my disappointment. The program should be more than an interrogation session, followed by a report filled out on paper to keep track of cases where the school took an issue. To a student who doesn't even feel like they deserve to live, the worst thing you could possibly do is make them feel like they have something wrong with them because of their emotions. It's my understanding that this is what sometimes happens when someone gets referred for help, or at least that's how it happened in this situation. The SAT program has the potential to save lives, and WCPS must ensure that it does so successfully when at all possible. To come closer to this goal, my suggestions for you are to, one, strive to build strong trusting relationships between the counselors and the students. If a student feels like they can trust an adult, they'll be more likely to share their struggles with them and get help. Two, encourage counselors to do as much as possible to create student awareness about the program, because it works least efficiently when nobody knows about it. Number three, create an open forum of suggestion for those who have gone through the program in the past. This way, counselors can learn and adapt their response to a very different kind of emotional reaction they're dealing with. And number four, look into the possibility of adding more counselors to certain schools. It must be very difficult for counselors to do their jobs while being responsible for the emotional well-being, college preparation, class scheduling, graduation requirements, standardized testing, and more for over three hundred students each. I know this would require more funding and school office space, however, I believe it should be looked into. Increasing the number of counselors in schools will not only reduce the workload of the counselors, but allow them more time to work directly with students and increase their counseling quality. Not only could this affect the life and emotional well-being of one person, but it could potentially save someone from exploding in retaliation, as we unfortunately saw unfold in Portland, Florida these past few weeks. I hope you take this into consideration in the future, and I look forward to the possibility of working on these issues alongside you as a student member of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mackley. Marsha Fuller.
Good evening. My name is Marsha Fuller, and I am a lifelong resident of the north end of Hagerstown. I have previously worked in the medical field, followed by fifteen years as a librarian at the Washington County Free Library. During my time at the library, I was also one of two-hundred-and-seventy board-certified genealogists in the United States. All of that is to say that I know how to research and how to evaluate evidence. I'd like to address the board regarding the proposed cell tower at North Hagerstown High School. As a graduate of North High many years ago, I have some serious concerns over this proposal. First of all, I have concerns about the way the process was conducted by Milestone. Adequate notice was not given for the balloon test. I'd like to know when and where the notice was published of intent to conduct it, and every household should have been notified so that they could have watched if they so chose. In addition, adequate notice was not given of the community meeting or the zoning board of appeals hearing. One week prior to the community meeting and two weeks prior to the zoning board hearing is not sufficient time to prepare. I also question whether notice of the meetings was mailed to all residents in the half-mile radius of the proposed site. I've spoken with many neighbors and only found two who received postcards. I wonder if Milestone has ever produced a copy of the mailing list and the postal receipt to prove who they mailed it to. But my most serious concern centers around the health and safety of our students, teachers, and the surrounding community. I confess that, like most of us, I thought of cell towers as safe. The cell tower companies say they're safe, right? And the federal government would do something about them if they weren't safe, right? But after more than sixty hours of research into the subject over the last three weeks, I'm beginning to think differently. Scientists and physicians alike are publishing multiple papers on the subject, and it doesn't look good for children. Around the world, countries are taking strong action to reduce wireless radiation on children. In April 2016, the mayor of Haifa, Israel, announced that the city was immediately removing Wi-Fi from its schools and going to wired. Countries such as Switzerland, Italy, France, Austria, Luxembourg, Bulgaria, Poland, Hungary, Russia, and China have already set radio frequency exposure limits, which are one-hundred to ten-thousand times less than those of the U.S. They recognize that there can be non-thermal biological effects from wireless radiation. Sweden's prestigious Karolinski Institute's Department of Neuroscience had this to say in a 2015 letter. Wireless systems such as cell towers cannot be regarded as safe in schools, but must be deemed highly hazardous and unsafe for children, as well as for the staff. Near to home, Dr. Joshua Booth, Assistant Professor of Computer Science at Franklin and Marshall College, who specializes in non-radiation, non-ionizing radiation, sorry, made the following comments in Lancaster, Pennsylvania to their school board. "I recommend taking precautions for our children from microwave exposure. That includes not situating a tower at the elementary school or the middle school." He measured the power density at the Landisville Middle School cell tower and found at several distinct locations that its power density was four times higher than the absolute maximum that had been promised for the tower by Verizon at the zoning board hearings. How am I doing on time here?
A minute forty.
Okay, we'll move quickly. I'll skip through some of this because you can read it. But in the Department of, sorry, the Department of Interior has become so concerned about the negative effect that these waves are having on animals in the environment, that they also wrote a formal letter in 2014 pointing out that the FCC regulation is outdated. To reiterate, the FCC has not updated
Students, administrators, and others involved in our educational system. Perspective studies must be part of the evaluation of changes in employee hiring and retention, as well as perceptions, attitudes, and behaviors. Racial diversity is a critically important component of this program, but it must also include considerations of gender, culture, religion, physical ability and appearance, autism, learning abilities, gender identification, sexual orientation, and other characteristics of our diverse society. Given the incidence of bullying and other forms of discrimination against lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender students and their physical and psychological consequences, it is troubling that the needs of LGBTQ students are not even mentioned in this report. I wish to make the following recommendations to the Board. Hold public meetings to allow additional stakeholder input for members of the community before implementing committee's recommendations. Two, perform surveys to determine the status of diversity issue problems in Washington County Public Schools and establish a system for evaluating outcomes of the Board's diversity recommendations. Three, review curricula and policies that have been effective in other school systems and communities in promoting diversity in hiring and changing outcomes in staff, administrators, and students in terms of attitude and behaviors. It is not essential for all people to like or approve of everyone in the community, but we must all live and work together. Respect and tolerance must be woven into the fabric of education for all students in Washington County. Thank you, and I've included resources in my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Kroger.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Michael. My name's Chris Mackley, and I'm currently a sophomore at Williamsburg High School. Tonight, I sit before you as not just a student, but a candidate for the student member of the Board, where if elected, I would succeed the role that Ibrahim Diallo is serving now, although he could not make it tonight. I come here today to address a very insistent part of WCPS students' daily life: their safety and well-being. I read the public letter that Superintendent Michael wrote to students and families of WCPS, and I want to thank you, Dr. Michael, for prioritizing our safety. While I realize the huge amount of WCPS students support for the Never Again Gun Violence Movement, I'm very much aware that gun regulations are totally out of the hands of the Board of Ed and even that of the student member. On the other hand, WCPS does have total control of its Student Assistance Program, or SAP for short. As we heard at last month's public board meeting from a parent whose student was failed by the SAP program, it has its flaws. Although we may not know all the details about what specifically took place with her son, I have my own experience with the program. In the past few months, I referred a friend of mine to the counselors for suicidal thoughts and actions. Although that student is doing better now, the process could have and should have worked much better. That student openly shared with me their frustrations and dislikes about the SAP program and how it functioned, to my disappointment. The program should be more than an interrogation session, followed by a report filled out on paper to keep track of cases where the school took an issue. To a student who doesn't even feel like they deserve to live, the worst thing you can possibly do is make them feel like they have something wrong with them because of their emotions. It's my understanding that this is what sometimes happens when someone gets referred for help, or at least that's how it happened in this situation. The SAP program has the potential to save lives, and WCPS must ensure that it does so successfully when at all possible. To come closer to this goal, my suggestions for you are to: One, strive to build strong trusting relationships between the counselors and the students. If a student feels like they can trust an adult, they'll be more likely to share their struggles with them and get help. Two, encourage counselors to do as much as possible to create student awareness about the program, because it works least efficiently when nobody knows about it. Number three, create an open forum of suggestion for those who have gone through the program in the past. This way, counselors can learn and adapt their response to a very different kind of emotional reaction they're dealing with. And number four, look into the possibility of adding more counselors to certain schools. It must be very difficult for counselors to do their jobs while being responsible for the emotional well-being, college preparation, class scheduling, graduation requirements, standardized testing, and more for over 300 students each. I know this would require more funding and school office space; however, I believe it should be looked into. Increasing the number of counselors in schools will not only reduce the workload of the counselors, but allow them more time to work directly with students and increase their counseling quality. Not only could this affect the life and emotional well-being of one person, but it could potentially save someone from exploding in retaliation, as we unfortunately saw unfold in Parkland, Florida these past few weeks. I hope you take this into consideration in the future, and I look forward to the possibility of working on these issues alongside you as a student member of the Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mackley. Marcia Fuller.
My name is Marcia Fuller, and I am a lifelong resident of the north end of Hagerstown. I have previously worked in the medical field, followed by 15 years as a librarian at the Washington County Free Library. During my time at the library, I was also one of 270 board-certified geneologists in the United States. All of that is to say that I know how to research and how to evaluate evidence. I'd like to address the Board regarding the proposed cell tower at North Hagerstown High School. As a graduate of North High many years ago, I have some serious concerns over this proposal. First of all, I have concerns about the way the process was conducted by Milestone. Adequate notice was not given for the balloon test. I'd like to know when and where the notice was published of intent to conduct it, and every household should have been notified so that they could have watched if they so chose. In addition, adequate notice was not given of the community meeting or the Zoning Board of Appeals hearing. One week prior to the community meeting and two weeks prior to the zoning board hearing is not sufficient time to prepare. I also question whether notice of the meetings was mailed to all residents in the half-mile radius of the proposed site. I've spoken with many neighbors and only found two who received postcards. I wonder if Milestone has ever produced a copy of the mailing list and the postal receipt to prove who they mailed it to. But my most serious concern centers around the health and safety of our students, teachers, and the surrounding community. I confess that, like most of us, I thought of cell towers as safe. The cell tower companies say they're safe, right? And the federal government would do something about them if they weren't safe, right? But after more than 60 hours of research into the subject over the last three weeks, I am beginning to think differently. Scientists and physicians alike are publishing multiple papers on the subject, and it doesn't look good for children. Around the world, countries are taking strong action to reduce wireless radiation on children. In April 2016, the mayor of Haifa, Israel, announced that the city was immediately removing Wi-Fi from its schools and going to wired. Countries such as Switzerland, Italy, France, Austria, Luxembourg, Bulgaria, Poland, Hungary, Russia, and China have already set radio frequency exposure limits, which are 100 to 10,000 times less than those of the U.S. They recognize that there can be non-thermal biological effects from wireless radiation. Sweden's prestigious Karolinska Institute's Department of Neuroscience had this to say in a 2015 letter. Wireless systems such as cell towers cannot be regarded as safe in schools, but must be deemed highly hazardous and unsafe for children, as well as for the staff. Near to home, Dr. Joshua Booth, Assistant Professor of Computer Science at Franklin and Marshall College, who specializes in non-radiation, non-ionizing radiation, sorry, made the following comments in Lancaster, Pennsylvania, to their school board. "I recommend taking precautions for our children from microwave exposure. That includes not situating a tower at the elementary school or the middle school." He measured the power density at the Landisville Middle School cell tower and found at several distinct locations that its power density was four times higher than the absolute maximum that had been promised for the tower by Verizon at the zoning board hearings. How am I doing on time, Mr. Peter?
A minute forty.
Okay, we'll move quickly. I'll skip through some of this, because you can read it. But in the Department of the, uh, sorry, the Department of the Interior has become so concerned about the negative effect that these waves are having on animals in the environment that they also wrote a formal letter in 2014 pointing out that the FCC regulation is outdated. To reiterate, the FCC has not updated its standards for radio waves in 21 years, and a lot has changed since then. I urge you to watch the YouTube video I've given you a URL from Montgomery County when they talked about their cell towers. The American Academy of Pediatrics, whose membership is comprised of over 60,000 board-certified pediatricians and pediatric specialists, recommends that the U.S. government tighten wireless exposure limits and that the public reduce children's exposure to devices that admit wireless radiation, such as cell towers. The results of the study entitled "Increased Incidence of Cancer Near a Cell Phone Transmitter Station," which was published in the International Journal of Cancer Prevention, concludes with: "The results of this study showed that there was a significantly greater incidence of cancers of all kinds within the vicinity of a cell phone transmitter station." But it is not only children who are affected by this; teachers and other staff would be at risk also. We note that recent studies have linked electromagnetic fields to Parkinson's Disease, ALS, and Alzheimer's Disease. For those who would say I'm being overly cautious, I'd like to point out that early toxicology research on the effects of tobacco found low incidences of many types of tumors in animals, so scientists dismissed this evidence, but history later proved them wrong. In conclusion, I would say that the core maximum of the precautionary principle cited by the World Health Organization is that an action should not be taken when there is scientific uncertainty about its potential impact. Here in Washington County, we don't take chances with our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Fuller. Robert Knaugel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I live in 900 block of Oak Hill Avenue, and I've come to testify also about the Chantel Milestone Communication cell tower. The neighborhood that we're talking about, I characterize it as the Western Maryland Railroad tracks on the south, Pennsylvania Avenue; on the west, Northern Avenue; on the north, Potomac Avenue; on the east, roughly, I consider that to be the neighborhood. I have only become aware of the issue in the last eight days. I attended a meeting at the Morris-Frock American Legion on Tuesday of last week. There were approximately, I would say, 70 people there, 50 to 70. And it was an informational meeting. Chantel is trying to be helpful, I believe. And I also attended the Zoning Board of Appeals hearing the following Wednesday, thereabouts. And there were not so many people. So my, my consideration at this point, I'm relatively neutral about this. The concern that I gather is the location of the tower. So I have one observation to make. It's not all clear to me that Chantel Milestone has done a proper study of alternative locations. I brought this up with the councils via email, and I've gotten one reply. There's an apparent confusion, at least to me, about the site called Maryland Metals. As you might recall, on Mitchell Avenue up near the Central Chemical, the Superfund Site, there is an abandoned, I think it's abandoned, site, Maryland Metals. And many of the people at the Morris-Frock meeting said, "Why not there rather than on the school grounds?" And they, Chantel Milestone claimed that it was too close to another tower. And I was scratching my head about that, because it's no more than 500 yards, Maryland Metal, from the existing planned location. Then I heard the same claim made in the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting about their location being too close to another tower, and I thought I heard, and I verified with several in the group, that the gentleman claimed that the tower would, that the Maryland Metals location was a mile south of North High. Took me a little while, but that's right, there was an active Maryland Metal site on the corner of Church Street and Burhans Boulevard. So at that point, I thought, "Well, it's possible." And I actually leaned over and communicated this to the Chantel executives, just, you know, pointed out on the map that we're talking about here, and there's, and so on. So we'll see. That's, that's my one observation. The other observation is, this is a commercial venture, and it's developing. There's this 3G and 4G, 2 gigahertz band, 1,900 megabits band, behind and above that for increased speeds. And it's not going to start. I mean, 5G is in the works. And so I think you'd be setting a bad precedent to allow the tower there. And I make a rough analogy, it's not exact, but, I mean, if you can recall back to the days when the vending machine companies were in there with their sugar drinks and everything, that was somewhat of an embarrassment. It took a while to bring the school systems generally, not just in Washington County, and I don't remember all the politics of it, but, I mean, you don't want to be selling, you know, it's, it's a good contract to have, let's put it that way. Vending is a good contract. Commercial prop, and it's not the exact first mission of the educational institutions, to provide commercial opportunities. So I'm just saying, you know, that there's some politics involved here, if you wish to consider it, and those are my ideas. And I have one not related issue. I brought this up before the City Council. Occasionally, I go down to the meetings, and one of the things that I've noticed, having lived here a couple of times during my life, I was born and raised here, and then lived away for 30-some years. And the issue is the overlapping jurisdictions. I really do believe that the City of Hagerstown and Washington County Government need to plan out forward here and see if there can be some mutual study about where the jurisdictions do overlap and the conflicts that might arise. I've gotten some positive reaction from the city that they are aware of the issue, and really, I don't know the politics. I'm not making any criticisms here. I'm just saying, I've lived in overlapping jurisdictions before, and it can be irritating.
Thank you, Mr. Michael. Nancy Allen.
I want to, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to have the public comments. And I think it's most important when the Board of Education is giving an opportunity for residents and homeowners and taxpayers and students to come in and voice their opinion about the Washington County Public Schools. So I want to thank you for that, first of all. I'm not a stranger to the Board of Education, I'll say that. I've been involved with educational issues and things that the Board of Education has done in the past, and applauded your efforts for gifted and talented into the schools. So I want to say that I'm very supportive of many of the things that you've done, and I think in the past, you've been very responsible and will continue to be so in your decisions that you make for future schools and policies and procedures. With that, I would like to share a concern that I do have now, and that is about the tower that you are considering at the North Hagerstown High School property. I've written letters to each of you. I don't know if you had a chance to receive them in your mailboxes or not. There was some documentation in there, but I would like to share some of the points that I mentioned in that letter now, tonight. I'm also a Realtor by profession, and as that role, I am very interested in anything that we may be doing as a community that might be detrimental to our community, both as a homeowner, as a taxpayer, and as certainly the well-being of students and the public. I feel like the monetary gain that the tower may provide to the Washington County Board of Education for the lease revenue may be negatively offset by the decrease in the revenue to the Washington County Board of Education by taxes received from real estate. I say this because I believe that if you do install this tower of 130-some feet, possibly, it could be detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. Many city residents that reside within close proximity to North Hagerstown High School recently attended a presentation meeting on Tuesday, February 13, in which the Chantel Communications Company presented the proposal for Milestone installation of the cell tower. Residents expressed concern over the location of the tower, and there were alternative sites suggested for consideration. The Maryland Metal site, as you just heard Mr. Knaugel mention, and the Rite Aid space, we refer to that as the Superfund State or Site, they were also mentioned by area residents. However, the representatives from Chantel and Milestone stated they had already considered those sites, and they found them to be not suitable. After further discussion of the location, it was apparent that Chantel and Milestone are confusing the Maryland Metal sites with another offset, off-site off of Salem Avenue, and the Maryland Metal site should be reconsidered. You may be aware that in 2016, the Prince George's County Public Schools canceled a contract with Milestone and decided not to install a cell tower on the grounds of the Eleanor Roosevelt High School. This was because the citizens surrounding the school notified the Prince George's County Board of Education. They expressed their concerns over the, over the proposed cell tower, and subsequently, the Board of Education decided not to install the cell tower there. The public vehemently opposed the installation of the tower on public school property. There is much research to document the health and safety issues, and I'm sure that you are able to find that with some of the information I enclosed in your packet. What I am concerned about is the fact that, in the United States, many of residents who move into areas are looking for that property and that valuation. To this, I'd like to offer that the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, better known as HUD, considers cell towers to be, quote, "hazards and nuisances." HUD requires its certified appraisers to take the presence of nearby cell towers into consideration when determining the value of a single-family residential property. Furthermore, it prohibits FHA underwriting of mortgages for homes that are within the engineered fall zone of a cell tower. The appraiser must indicate whether the dwelling or related property improvements is located within the easement serving a high-voltage transmission line, radio-TV transmission line, cell phone tower, microwave relay dish or tower, and I've given you documentation there. I see my stop sign, and I'm a person who likes to play by the rules, so for this, I would ask you to respectfully reconsider this, open this up to the public, let them determine if this is a good decision for our schools, because I feel that once it is at Washington, once Milestone has their foot in the door at North Hagerstown High School, they will be looking to plant their foot on all the remaining schools within our county. And in closing, I would like to present a letter that was sent to me today, and I believe it was sent to you as well, by Delegate Paul Quarterman from our state delegation, who was asking for us to take back, step back, take a little bit more time, research all of the information that is there for us to make sure that we are making the best decision for our students and are taking what we call precautionary measures to make sure that we do no harm to the community, our students, and our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Allen.
I'll leave a copy here for each of you there. Do you have any questions of the packet that I dropped off for you today?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Neil Becker.
Williams, Dr. Michael, and Board members. I know today's been a busy day, and we've had some opportunities to engage with the county commissioners regarding funding, and that's the topic of my discussion this evening. And just very briefly, for several weeks, we've talked about, how are we going to fund the budget? Is the county going to have the money? There's still a delta between the Board's budget and the county budget, but I do have a solution, at least a piece of a solution regarding funding the budget, and it's the Maryland Promise. The Kerwin Commission, of which we've discussed the key points in recent months, has presented a few recommendations related to Maryland public schools, including pre-K, supports, wraparound supports, CTE, career and technology education, increased planning time, increased salaries for educators. But we also need to address the inequality that's in schools and school systems. We need to respect and support all educators, and we need to fund education. And funding is probably the keystone to all of this. Years ago, Marylanders were promised that gaming revenues would increase funding for public schools. Maryland's public schools were going to get this windfall of cash from then slots. That didn't happen. We were sold a false bill of goods, and a couple state executives are responsible for that and have continued to allow that to happen. Maryland, Marylanders have a chance to fix the fund. House Bill 1697, Senate Bill 1122, together, if they're implemented, will add $500 million of casino gaming revenue to fund public education in Maryland. I invite you, I invite all educators, I invite supporters of public education to support this effort to fix the fund. It's a statewide effort, it's not local. Many legislators are supportive of this opportunity to tap into the gaming revenues to fix the fund, and then we won't be so strapped for cash and worried about how we'll fund public education in Maryland. On March 19, we're going to travel to Annapolis for a Fix the Fund rally. Our students deserve a fully funded public education. By fixing the fund, the school system, and the county together will better be in a better position to educate the children. I can send you some information via email about our opportunity and the invitation I've expressed today to join us on the 19th, and I appreciate your efforts to create a budget that is in the best interest of students, as you've done this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Becker is the last person that we have signed up this evening. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to address the Board during public comment? Okay, thank you. At this time, we have set aside time for Board Member response to public comment. Just my colleagues, if they have anything they would like to say in response. Mrs. Fisher?
I would appreciate it. I think my fellow Board members would also, if you could either email us a copy of what you presented tonight, or send us a copy that our secretary could copy and provide to us. It'd be very helpful. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just wanted, excuse me. My voice. I'd just like to say thank you to everybody that's presented this evening. We heard a lot of different views on different subject matter, and it's always good to hear what the public is thinking and what you want us to know. So thank you very much for coming tonight and for giving us your views.
Okay, at this time, we'll address old business. We have one item of old business this evening, and that is consideration of Senate Bill 888 and House Bill 220. Mr. Stauffer?
1220.
What did I say?
About 220.
Did I say 220? It should have been 1220. I beg your pardon.
Makes no difference.
Senate Bill 888 and House Bill 1220.
Several weeks ago, the Board of Education approved its 2018 legislative program, and part of that was a change to the 2010 Fairness Negotiations Act. Without getting long-winded about this, the first part of it was cost of mediators. It was an attempt to have the state take over the cost of mediation and set up a, a list of mediators that school boards and employee groups could draw from to here, what we call impasse procedures. That was a statewide initiative. That is no longer part of our initiative. The other part was a, part of the bill was to amend the law to allow for an orderly budget process, and as part of that, Senate Bill 888 and House Bill 1220 were written up.[1797.97] Basically, what these bills would have, this is the language that came out of the bill. Each county board shall submit an annual budget in writing to the county commissioners, county council, or the county executive. The budget shall be submitted not less than 45 days before the date for levying local taxes, or on an earlier date, on or after March 1st, as may be requested by the county fiscal authority. And then, this language was pertaining to Washington County. This would have been a local law here. In Washington County, in the course of negotiations under this section, the parties shall make every reasonable effort to conclude negotiations in a timely manner in order that the governing body of Washington County may act on the operating budget of the Washington County Board of Education. And then somehow, this language mysteriously got into the law, which was never the intent of this board. It has been taken out of the House bill, it is still in the Senate bill. If the parties are unable to conclude negotiations before the budget submission deadline under Chapter 5, 102B2 of this article, all terms and conditions of the most recent negotiated agreement shall continue in force and effect without change for the next fiscal year. I've been assigned this because I, this is basically my proposal. What the motion will be tonight will be to withdraw, request the withdrawal by our county delegation to the General Assembly of Senate Bill 888 and House Bill 1220, and I put my arguments or positions, get an email to the elected board. Basically, the language is vague, the portion about, shall make every reasonable effort to conclude negotiations in a timely manner. What is reasonable to one party may not be reasonable to another person, and therefore, there could be a labor complaint made to the Public Service Labor Relations Board, and that would require us to use outside counsel to fight that case, costing us money, which in tight budget times, we just simply don't have, in my opinion. And also, I've been upset with the bill because I've never understood how that one part got in there, how it mysteriously appeared and so forth. So anyhow, to make a long story short, I would move and make a motion tonight that the withdrawal of Senate Bill 888 and House Bill 1220, the request be made to have them not be concerted by the Senate and House of Delegates.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Mr. Stauffer's motion is to request the withdrawal of Senate Bill 888 and House Bill 1220 from consideration by the Maryland Senate and House of Delegates. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Discussion or questions? Mrs. Fisher?
I may be incorrect, but I believe in the email that we did have earlier, it recommended removing these, but I don't think there was really any explanation or arguments presented as to why Mr. Stauffer is seeking to have these removed. I would actually like to have more time to discuss this. I don't know if, how quickly things are going through the legislature, if we actually have more time, but I'm not sure I really understand his position as to...
Do you mean an email that I sent to the elected board?
I guess it was you.
Pardon?
I guess you, you're the one in the Senate. I don't know, I read through them.
Well, I think in my email, I definitely laid out positions as to why these bills should be withdrawn. The hearing is March the 1st, so we have to move one way or the other, and that's what, Thursday? There's a hearing in Annapolis.
The first hearing, the first hearing is March 1st. Mr. Reiner, you said we don't have the authority to withdraw...
Well, I mean, it's been introduced by Delegate McKay. How, you know, he's going to have to withdraw it.
Yes, and the request would be to Delegate McKay to withdraw it. That's why we're having this action item.
And he has been alerted to the possibility and seems to be okay with it.
Or did he have any idea how that section that you were speaking to, Mr. Stauffer, how that ended up in there?
No one has, we've never...
Somebody's got it.
We've never heard. We don't know if it happened in Legislative Services, where they write the bill, or whether a member of the delegation. My guess is it was added by Legislative Services. That's my guess. But I don't know that for a fact. If the delegation says they didn't add it, then I believe that they didn't add it.
Is that your only complaint, that one addition?
No, I laid out in my email, you know, the associations are against this, they're going to go to Annapolis and testify against it. I don't think we need that disunity. Shaun from Washington County, we've worked hard to rebuild relationships with the negotiate, various negotiating groups, and as I said, the language is vague, reasonable effort. What's a reasonable effort? What's unreasonable to one person is unreasonable to somebody else.
So, Mr. Reiner, to address your question, my conversation with Delegate McKay with regard to the process was that the board, should it decide to make the request to withdraw, would notify him, and that what takes place is there is a letter written to request the withdrawal of the board, consider, or, I'm sorry, the bill from consideration. I also inquired if there would be a demerit or a black mark, and I was assured that there would not, that if anything, Mrs. Cade said that there could possibly be a gold star awarded, because there are so many bills being considered in this legislative session that this would be one less. I might add that, you know, I've been told that, and my understanding is much of this is already covered in COMAR, and that aside from F2, which is in Senate Bill 888, basically, it just reiterates what's in COMAR. So, you know, my point would be, is this really necessary if what's here is already addressed in COMAR?
The Legislative Committee felt at one time, obviously strongly enough about this to have the bills, to submit it to, first of all, the rest of the board to vote on, and then to submit it to our delegation to write the bills. Is our Legislative Committee, therefore, going to recommend at the next go-round, another similar bill to address the concerns we had that required, or seemed to require, the writing of this to start with?
I think the alarms went off, Mrs. Fisher, if I might use that figure of speech, when F2 appeared in the Senate bill, and, you know, that was not the intent of the LRT, was not what we had requested be in the bill of the delegation. My understanding is the delegation wants to do what the board wants it to do, and while we've been told that by amendment, F2 could come out of Senate bill so that it looks like, and reads like, the House bill, we have no assurance of that, and we have no assurance of what other amendments may or may not be made that would change the intent of the LRT when we made the initial request. So, you know, I'm not a fortune teller, I can't say whether or not we would revisit this next year. I'm certainly one who's in favor of an orderly budget process and finishing budgets in a timely fashion. So, I would just like to see the law reflect what the intent was initially.
What's left of the original initiative is a far distant thing than originally planned, because the cost of mediators and that portion of it, if you check out the legislative program, is no longer there and so forth.
If we go to impasse, we would have costs for mediators and so on anyway, but I would like, in order to, for me to, in all good conscience, vote against this, or vote to have it put down, so I guess it's voting for the motion, I would like some assurances that we will consider a similar bill next year, hopefully, though, one that is more carefully thought out, and that we communicate better to our delegation so that it doesn't, something doesn't happen in the same manner as it did this year. But I'm not on the legislative...
Well, the original thought-out bill was deep, was good, but this is what remains of, as I said. Setting up the part about mediation is out of it, that was removed, and most of what the remaining bill covers is covered in COMAR. See no use to have another new obstacle impediment to negotiations being carried out just in this county.
Any other discussion, questions?
I don't see this as an obstacle or impediment, but I'm understanding the rest of what you're saying, so...
Well...
Anything further? Then we'll call for the vote. So, the motion is to request the withdrawal of Senate Bill 888 and House Bill 1220 from consideration by the Maryland Senate and House of Delegates. All those in favor? Okay, we're unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Fellow board members, appreciate that.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. Our first and only item of new business this evening is the consent agenda. Good evening, Mr. Baker.
Good evening, President Williams, board members, Dr. Michael. Tonight, I have four items for your review. These items were reviewed by the Purchasing Review Committee on February 8th and are being recommended for approval, and staff is available if you have any additional questions.
Is there a motion?
Scott, I'm ready to move to approve the awards renewals and procurements for Northern Middle School, electrical switchgear replacements at Ellsworth Electric at a total cost of Unit price contract for tree trimming and removal to Antietam Tree Service, Carbaugh Tree Service, and Preferred Arbor Care at the unit prices listed. School bus and vehicle tires to Service Tire Truck Center at the unit prices listed, and copier paper and envelopes to Veritiv at the unit prices listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. Questions, discussion?
I have a question. Is there a reason we use three different tree trimming services?
Yeah, one would be for emergencies, so if we have a tree fall and we need to have something done in an expedited fashion, we need to have some, you know, some flexibility in who we're going to, who has the available manpower to do it. And then also, for even scheduled projects, each of the awarded vendors will have the opportunity to quote that project utilizing their unit prices. So, we also keep some competitive nature to the quotes, having multiple vendors.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Reiner?
Going back, excuse me, I'm looking at that. I was looking at that because a couple of things caught me by surprise. So, you're saying that they bid again on a project?
Specific project.
Even though they already have their rates down?
They have their rates, but those are maximum rates. In the RFP, we tell them to list their maximum rate, so if, for example, let's say we needed 10 trees cut down in one location, you know, they've kind of put those figures in on a single-tree basis. If they're going to do 10 trees in, you know, in one area, they would be able to be a little bit more competitive. And then also, if they have just a crew that maybe doesn't have, you know, any work, and they can also sharpen their pencil on individual projects as they have manpower to provide.
Do we give each of these the opportunity to bid on the projects as they come in?
Yeah, we said typically, we'll, in this case, Paul Breakall, who schedules a lot of these projects, will reach out to multiple vendors. If it is a project over $5,000, we said that we would give every vendor the opportunity to quote that project.
So, and under $5,000, we just give it to somebody, or do...
We would, Paul would call and see who had the availability, and then typically would at least reach out to more than one to get quotes.
Mr. Victor, I think this was originally bid, had wide variety of people could have heard bids in on this, and what happens is we shortlist that based on their bids, based on their maximum unit prices, and it's an on-call service, similar to what we use with a lot of other areas. The smaller the project, the less, you know, pain and effort we're going to go through. Even the vendors won't go, you know, three of them come out and look at one tree type of thing. So, if we have something that needs to be cleaned up, it's a small project, they might rotate the work around, they might know who has the best price on something like that, who has the availability. The larger the projects get, we don't have to go back out to bid to 20, sometimes we can go to these three and have them bid against each other. It's almost similar to our five architects of our on-call services. We'll go to them, get prices from the five of them, rather than from 25 architects, particularly for small projects. Nothing in this precludes us from, let's say we had a large project, had a $50,000 tree removal effort, from going out to bid. We still could go out to bid...
Correct.
...to all vendors if we chose to. So, this is just like our shortlist for on-call services. It's kind of the standard means of practice for a variety of services that we have. I can't think of another example, but there's dozens of examples. Espasos solution.
I don't have a problem, I'm just saying, if we're looking at three, so I think, you know, are these the three that we typically would use, because they seem to be reasonable? I mean, I'm trying to figure out one line, I still haven't figured it out, down at the bottom, in the bottom, flag are certified by ATSSA, other acceptable clarifying agency, and I'm looking at two of them, it's anywhere from 50 to 150 emergency hours, and the other was 13, 13, and 17.
Yeah.
I mean...
So, a couple of things probably replay here. First and foremost, you know, anytime we're procuring services, even over the course of the year, if it's multiple projects in excess of $25,000, we have to have a procurement. So, this RFP is the procurement that covers all of the work for tree trimming services. And then, on an as-needed basis, we go out to those vendors for pricing. Their unit prices don't always match on a particular line item. They may have leveraged a higher rate on one item compared to a lower rate on the other. As they develop their quote, how their quote system works sort of will leverage how they, which rate they apply. But as Mr. Baker mentioned, if they're starving for work right now, because, let's say, there's not been a lot of tree work, and they've got work crews that they're looking to keep busy, they could sharpen their pencil and give us an even better price and go below the prices that are quoted here, but they can't exceed the unit prices.
Any other questions? The motion then is on Mr. Bickford's motion for approval of the consent agenda as read by Mr. Bickford. Just as a reminder, we still have a quorum. We've lost Mr. Stauffer, and Mr. Stauffer had to leave, but we do have a quorum, so we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approval of tonight's consent agenda? Five votes. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
That brings us to the superintendent. That brings us to the superintendent's report this evening.
Okay, thank you, President Williams. Come on up, Mr. Rollins, Mr. House, Mr. Tedrick. Tonight we wanted to provide the board with an update on the urban improvement project, the DOE component downtown. We're going to give a very brief report. We have four brief reports here in a row for you this evening to bring you up to speed. So we want to just bring you up to speed on the five floors, the addition of the fifth floor, kind of the final drawings. And next Tuesday, we'll be asking the board to vote on construction documents. They'll be available as soon as possible. We're anxious to continue to keep this project, excuse me, project moving. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. House.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Michael. Just want to give you a quick update to the final design for the DOE component of the downtown educational complex. Just again, to refamiliarize yourself with the project, project site is located nestled between the existing Maryland Theater and the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts on South Potomac Street. With the lower level floor plan, nothing has changed with that. We still have wood shop and storage spaces and access to the Maryland Theater and also access into the existing Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. On the first floor plan, again, no changes there. Has the administrative level, a secured lobby, dining hall, kitchen facilities, and also the loading dock for the services to the school. Second floor plan, we did make a modification here where we eliminated the elevated bridge that was to connect to the USMH project. And we created a collaboration space at the end of the corridor, at the west end of the corridor, much identical to what we had on the third and fourth floors. And again, maintaining access through the stairwell and through the elevator to the Barbara Ingram School. Third and fourth plans, again, are identical to what we've presented before, maintaining connection, the, to the Maryland Theater, potential connection to the Maryland Theater at the third floor, and providing classroom space and collaboration space on the third and fourth floors. For the fifth floor, we have provided two science classrooms. They are at the western edge of the building with a prep area, prep room between them to serve both science classrooms. We have a general classroom located just to the east of that, academic storage, and then also IDF closets and, and toilet facilities. We've also extended up the existing elevator at the adjacent Barbara Ingram School to provide full accessibility to the fifth floor. And the, the square footage of the fifth floor is slightly smaller because we had to pull the front of the building back to maintain sightlines from, within the, within the streetscape. This is a, is a request of the Downtown Historic District Commission and maintaining the, the fabric of the, of the street. So the east elevation, which faces South Potomac Street, again, the majority of the facade has not changed whatsoever. The top gray portion is the, is that portion of the fifth floor which does sit back, which would not be exposed to view from the street. We have done some site analysis studies of this for both our purposes and also for the Historic District Commission. Just showing the south elevation adjacent to the alley between the building and the Maryland Theater, extending up the fifth floor. And you can see on the right side how the front of the building sets back. The rear elevation or the west elevation showing the loading dock area and, and the, just carrying the components of the, of the existing design up to the fifth floor. And then the north elevation, again, just extending the elements up to the fifth floor and extending out over the, over the existing school. And really, the streetscape in the rendering has not changed. It will not be visible from the street per our site analysis study that we've done, our sightline study, so.
You have any, you have any questions of the group here? We're happy to answer them.
There aren't a lot of surprises here because we've been looking at this now for a couple of years, trying to get it accomplished. But I have two questions just out of curiosity, and I'm looking at the, the rendering of the streetscape here. Is there a particular reason why the addition doesn't, the, the colors and the windows and so on blend in with the original to make it look like one building?
Part of that was done because of the, kind of the rhythm of the streetscape. We didn't want one massive-looking building out on South Potomac Street. And if you look at, at the remainder of the streetscape and also adjacent city blocks, you'll notice kind of this rhythm or this dialogue of, of, of different masonry colors throughout downtown. So just to kind of differentiate it and, and keep with the, with the rhythm of the, of the streetscape.
Sort of the historic-
Yes.
-smaller building ideas.
Yes.
Hey, the other question is, and maybe this, it'll change, I don't know. But I understand that the main entrance for students, once this is complete, will be the entrance from the addition rather than the existing.
Yes.
But if you look at this, the title, the name of the school is over the original Bispa. And it seems to me like if, if the other doors are going to be the door most people use, it ought to be over the, the addition, not the original building.
So we'll provide some wayfinding signs to make sure that people know where to go. We, we really don't want to call the addition or this new building just the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts-
Because it's for others.
Because it could be for other programs.
Right.
But certainly with signage, we'll be able to make sure people are directed in our right direction.
Okay.
That's one of the opportunities the board has. We could choose to have no name to the building and just be part of the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. Or you could choose the name of this building some other name of some type. So chose, you know, a lot of people are referring to it as Barbara Ingram. We've been referring to it as CIP way back in the day. And I saw bumper stickers today when we left the county commissioners meeting that said "Support the Hub." So it's been a little bit of everything at this point.
Thank you.
If you had anything other questions, we're, we're thinking next week will be the formality of the vote. Tonight really would be the presentation of the, of the building itself and respond to any questions you might have.
The only question I had was, there was some concern about possibly doing the loading docks at an angle? So it'd be easier to get trucks in there? Are you confident the, the trucks will have plenty of maneuverability?
We have worked through that.
Okay.
Of course, we're fortunate to have an owner who was a former truck driver-
Oh, yeah.
And we've tapped into his expertise and analysis in the approach here. One of the, the major changes that has transpired just recently is the fact that we have dropped one of the loading dock positions. At one time, there was the goal of trying to create something that could be utilized almost primarily by the, the Maryland Theater-
Okay.
-but would be encompassed as part of the dock arrangement in this building. The Maryland Theater has decided they are going to keep their current dock position, which allowed us to drop the one that would have been the most difficult to maneuver vehicles to.
Good.
So we now have one dock and internal dumpster locations. The dock position that has been eliminated will create more interior staging and storage area for the Board of Education.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you gentlemen.
And next week, we'll be back for consideration of the construction documents. Second report is graduation rate, dropout rates officially been released by the state. And Maureen and Mr. Ridenour are going to, Dr. Akers, going to give us a brief report on that.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Michael, members of the board. We're here to present the class of 2017 graduation and dropout rates. In 2012, Maryland State Department of Education instituted a cohort model to measure graduation rates. The first time ninth graders are a cohort of students, so they measure as they enter into ninth grade. They are added or removed from the cohort as they register, as they transfer, withdraw. We receive two points of data for graduation rate. We receive the four-year adjusted cohort, and then we receive the five-year adjusted cohort in the following year. For the dropout rate, we only get the four-year adjusted cohort. As you can see by this graphic, the cohort graduation rate was 92.2% for the class of 2017. This represents 1,516 diplomas, and this is above the Maryland state rate. Our dropout rate decreased. We are now at 5.8%, which is below Maryland, which is a good thing, with only 95 dropouts for the four-year cohort.
In general, we're pleased with our progress, being now over 92% graduation rate. Of course, we're always shooting for 100%, but I thought it was important to point out some of those individuals or groups that we credit for this success. First of all, parent support. The majority of our students come to school ready to learn and, and at least by the time they're in high school, and, and they are well-supported by their parents, their families, and, and they, they do all the right things with, you know, just basic encouragement and academics from us. When students do stumble, maybe fall behind in their credit counts and other issues, then our students have really developed perseverance by the time they're in high school. And sometimes that means they go to school all day and then go to evening high or go to summer school, but they stick with us more and more, and they're able to graduate within four or sometimes five years. And then, of course, our teachers, and it's all teachers. This is everyone's business, obviously, so pre-K through, you know, teachers of high school. Our teachers are the constant encouragement and support and obviously academics. And then when students are struggling, going the extra mile, you know, calling home, helping them after school, all those things, our teachers are very good at that. And then, of course, our guidance counselors who help our students with social, emotional needs and who help them set goals and a purpose for their education contribute. And then we have a group that deal with our really toughest, most struggling students, you know, students who are habitually truant or chronically absent, who have, you know, been, become very credit deficit during high school, meaning they've, you know, really fallen behind in their classes. And we have people who specialize in, in working with those students. So among those, we have our student intervention specialists, and we have those at, at our middle schools and high schools. They carry caseloads of students and work with them and help arrange resources with them. They advocate for them with teachers and administrators. They might help them get winter clothes in the winter. They might help them get, you know, school supplies, whatever it takes. Same way our pupil personnel workers who are knocking on doors early in the morning, late at night, making, trying to make sure the kids come to school. And in some instances, you know, putting pressure on families that are having a hard time getting their kids to come to school. But whatever, again, it's that whatever it takes, pupil personnel workers, social workers again, contribute with that social, emotional piece, working with students. And then kind of pulling it together at, at all levels, but most particularly in high school, those school administrators who, through their leadership and sometimes one-on-one with students and families, are helping to support that cause. But again, it's a team effort, and it begins as soon as they enter school. And, and it takes sometimes until their fifth or unfortunately sometimes sixth year before we get them through. But again, we're pleased with the progress, but of course, we're always going to shoot for 100%. And with that, are there any questions?
Couple additions that I'd like to share. North Hagerstown High School this year, a couple of weeks ago, we did recognize the principal in leadership meeting, but I did want to say publicly tonight, North Hagerstown High School had an all-time high graduation rate this, two years ago, the 2016-17 is what we're reporting on tonight, of 92.13%, which for North High, that was excellent. It was their highest year ever. We also recognized them for having the most improved graduation rate, improving almost a little over six percentage points. The same time across town, or closer to us, I guess, right now, South Hagerstown High School, we recognized them for achieving an all-time low grad, dropout rate of 10.46%. Also for having an all-time high graduation rate of 88.24%. And the award that I thought I was most proud to present to Jeremy Jacoby on behalf of the whole school and the student body was it was their fifth year in a row of having an all-time high graduation rate, meaning for five years in a row, they exceeded the graduation rate previously, the record for the previous year. So it's like having a five-time champion in a way. So congratulations to both of those schools, an awful lot of work that's going to enter our dropout prevention effort. Again, Rick and, and Maureen have identified a whole list of people and groups that have worked on this. I can remember a time when I first started as high school director, 20-some years ago now, we had dropout, annual dropout rate of, I think the annual rate was like 5.5%. So across four years, it was like 20, 25% of our students dropped out. So we would lose in a single year hundreds, hundreds of students. Now, at this point, we're losing about 100 students a year. It's done by cohorts, so it's just a little bit different how it's reported. But Washington County Public Schools, through the efforts of a lot of people, including staff and students and parents and a lot of other resources, has, has really done an excellent job in this over many years, so. There are no further questions, Mr. Fisher?
This is a little bit awkward, I guess, but I'm, I'm curious. Going back to the, the first slide, I guess, the four-year adjusted cohort. It indicates that students are added or removed from the cohorts as they either register, transfer, or withdraw. God forbid if a student would be, let's say, killed in an automobile accident. How does that affect, how does that get figured into the number?
They, they are removed from the, the group, but it doesn't count as a withdrawal, as a dropout. There are certain codes that don't count as a dropout, and that would be one of the codes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Maureen, Rick, appreciate that. Our third report tonight, kindergarten readiness. Again, we'll try to keep this short, but we made a great deal of progress with working with pre-K and what we hope will be very positive reports with kindergarten readiness in the future, but we had some success this year, and we're hoping to build on that. And we just wanted, since the KRA data's been released, to have our, our staff come here and make a presentation on that. So, Mr. Semler?
All right. Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Michael, members of the board. Thanks for allowing us to share with you our kindergarten readiness report tonight. Presenting with me is Dr. Stacy Hansen, coordinator of early learning, and Mrs. Kelly Longerbeam, our Funkstown lead teacher and early learning specialist. As Dr. Michael mentioned, Maryland State released its KRA data. I know, I believe each of you received this packet or the booklet in your packet. This report is the very detailed report that goes into state data, but also kind of crosses over all the different counties and breaks it into various subgroups and information about the data. We're going to share a little bit with you tonight and then go into some other information regarding our current efforts that we have across our system, but then also too with our pre-K expansion efforts. First, with some of the data we wanted to share with you, our overall data, when we look at a comparison of Washington County Public Schools to the state of Maryland, you'll see here that over the past three years, using the kindergarten readiness assessment, that we have remained relatively flat. 2015, 16, we're at 36%, and now in 17, 18, we're only showing at 37%. We did see a 4% increase from last year's, however, we dropped the year prior to that. Maryland also is relatively flat, as you can see with their data there. So it's interesting to look at across the state how much hasn't changed in terms of the assessment data when you're looking at all students. Just to note, this also reflects 1,600 students that were assessed this year with our kindergarten readiness assessment data. The previous year was a representative sample and only, I believe, we tested around 200 students as a representative sample. So it's, it's a different in size when we're looking at it. So that could be some of the variations with- with the data that we see. Along with that data, when we look at our overall readiness, we'd like to take an opportunity to look at our pre-K students. So these are the students who are able to access pre-kindergarten services that we offer in Washington County. The seventeen, eighteen data represents approximately six hundred students who are assessed, and when you look at that data, it's a little bit different. Over the past three years, we have shown some increases. We've increased two percent over the past three years. While two percent isn't certainly anything to brag about, we're starting to see a little bit of a trend that we hope will continue to increase. With that, though, if you look at the state of Maryland, they've actually dropped two percent over the past three years. They gained from last year, but the previous year, they had a four percent drop. So, you know, we're hoping that our trend in terms of our pre-K students who are accessing our pre-K services are beginning to show more readiness as we continue to add our services and look at increasing our capacity with our programs. The next chart looks at the different domains. So when students take the kindergarten readiness assessment, they are assessed in four different domains. This is social foundations, language and literacy, mathematics, and then physical well-being and motor development. When you look at our WCPS, again, it's the group of sixteen hundred students compared to the state of Maryland, you'll see that we are below the average across the state of Maryland, significantly below language and literacy with an eleven percentage gap there. That's concerning to us, and this, again, this is representative of all the students who are coming to us from kindergarten, so not necessarily those who have accessed our pre-K services. So with this data, we tend to look at this as an opportunity, look at our professional development for our teachers and what we're doing in our classrooms to really approach these different domains. That same set of, or that same data, looking at domain, but now looking at our pre-K subgroup is a little bit of a flip. When you look at our students who have accessed our pre-K services, we have now outscored the state of Maryland average in terms of the students who are accessing pre-K in the state of Maryland, and three out of four of the subdomain, of the domain, with language and literacy being underneath the average, however, it's only a three percent gap, so our gap is closed there on that. So I think this data is a picture that we're starting to see some positive things coming from our pre-K efforts and our pre-K opportunities that we have across the system. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hansen, just going to share a little bit of information about our prior care on the students who come to us from various opportunities and when we have them in kindergarten.
Good evening. So speak first to the bar graph that's on the left. When parents enroll their students into kindergarten, they complete a document that demonstrates prior care, so the year prior to entering kindergarten where their child predominantly attended. So you can see the percentages of those that had access to pre-K and the other prior care opportunities listed. The bar graph on the right shows what percentage of those students that participated in those prior care subgroups, how they demonstrated readiness. So you can see, by looking at that, our concerning areas are those that are in home and informal care, which means they really did not access any formal programs at all, and we're also looking at numbers that concern us that, for those students that are attending Head Start. One of the things we are offering next month is a full-day professional development, and we have invited the staff at Head Start to attend, and there are some members of their staff that will be attending. So the more collaboration and alignment we can, we can work on with them, probably the better. The next graph that you're going to see is also contained in the Readiness Matters booklet that you have, but we wanted to talk about it a little bit, just some of the data points. If you look at the very first, we'll call it a barbell, that shows the gap between those that are low income, the children that are coming from low income, and those that are coming from middle to high-class incomes. Truly, that's a small gap compared to the state. The state is a twenty-five point gap. What that tells us, it's a data point that says that every child in Washington County really should have access, so that aligns directly with Dr. Michael's goal to offer additional quality access to our students. We see the need, it's showing up in our data, so we're really happy with the ability to give more and more students access regardless, regardless, or regardless of income. The gap in the next two subgroups with our English language learners and our children with disabilities are predicted gaps, but at the same time, we've already put in place some things to address those. So this year, at our Title I schools, we have our English language teacher that works directly with pre-K students. So we're really looking forward to the impact that she's had on those students and how that will be demonstrated in our data next year. Also, the children with disabilities, we are working with our birth-to-five staff was awarded a grant that will allow us to have transition meetings between our pre-K staff, our birth-to-five staff, and also our kindergarten teachers, so that we can immediately, upon instruction in kindergarten, already know some of the strengths and weaknesses of the students that we're going to receive, and maybe some of the best practices. So instead of spending the first two weeks trying to figure out what works best for a specific student, we'll have opportunities to meet with our birth-to-five staff that may have been working with a student for the first five years of their life, and hopefully get them off to a really strong start immediately. Kelly's going to share also some additional things that we have in place to increase readiness across the county.
Hi, I'm going to address the efforts to increase kindergarten readiness. One of our first efforts is to continue our pre-K expansions, just as Matt and Stacy had said. We are seeing growth with our pre-K, with our KRA scores, and we want to continue those efforts and see that growth. We have met with Dr. Michael and know that he values early learning and wants all students in Washington County to be ready for kindergarten. Thus, in order to help meet this goal, we want to continue to expand and allow more opportunities for our students to attend pre-K. So the next slide will address those expansion efforts. We also continue to offer professional development for not only our pre-K teachers, but also our pre-K paraprofessionals, because we value them as well, and they are a key role in that classroom and have direct impact on our student's success and their abilities to be ready for kindergarten. We also provide additional professional development opportunities for our new hires to pre-K to help them in their first year, and we have provided professional development opportunities for administrators on developmentally appropriate practices in our early childhood classrooms. And just as Stacy said, we do have an upcoming PD opportunity for our teachers, but many of our PDs focus on curriculum instructional practices and also digging deep into our KRA data and looking for those strengths and weaknesses. And then also, our communities of practice, which has been a K through twelve approach. But recently, we have done a lot of collaboration with our content specialists in both math and ELA, and want to broaden that to include pre-K to twelve and really focus on those domains of language and literacy and mathematics. And that opportunity will be for our pre-K teachers, lead teachers, because they can provide support as well in the schools and administrators.
Additionally, we understand that the community awareness is vitally important to this critical readiness issue that we have. So we are trying to offer as many opportunities for our community to be engaged in this as well. So in June, we're going to be holding a readiness Olympics. Targeted audience will be our parents and families that have children birthed at age five, and that'll be at Fairground Park, so that we're just in the very early planning stages of that, so more to come. But we're hoping to put that out as much as we can and invite as many people as we can to that. Essentially, what that'll be is an opportunity for our children to engage in a lot of physical activities, but at the same time, the adults and teachers and instructors will be there speaking to the families about how those activities can promote readiness skills for their children. We're also targeting grandparents. In April, we're going to be having a grandparent workshop at the library, because on a daily basis, I probably talk to grandparents or, more recently, great-grandparents that are enrolling children for the first time and saying to me, "I've not done this in forty years. I don't know what readiness looks like. Can you please help?" So we recognize that that's really a group that we probably do want to address as much as we should. So we're going to be holding our first workshop at the Washington County Free Library in April, and hopefully with the feedback from that, we'll probably be more to come. So that'll be our first one, and we hope to offer many more after that. I also address the birth-to-five transition and the grant. And then, we've also created a ten-plus-one RAC card that are displayed in a lot of our pediatricians' offices. It's ten-plus-one strategies for school readiness. We have those many places throughout the community, and we also have milestone moments booklets that we're in collaboration with the Early Childhood Advisory Council and some other organizations to share with parents what really is developmentally appropriate for specific ages. So we have these available, both English and Spanish, and they are also in multiple locations throughout the county. Additionally, the partnerships, there's so many to name, I couldn't obviously give credit to all of them, but On Track, the Early Childhood Advisory Council, Judy Centers, HARC, the Hub at USMH, we work very closely on a weekly basis, sometimes a daily basis, so that we can truly get the word out about how critical this is and how much, you know, we need everybody to be involved.
I would say that the five bullet points represents a very small fraction of the larger work that's happening. Stacy mentioned the multiple partnerships, but it really truly is beginning to spread across the community in terms of an awareness and opportunities to continue to partner, and there's a lot of activities that are coming around, so we're excited about that growth. The last thing I want to share with you, and Kelly had mentioned the pre-kindergarten expansion, and this is something, obviously, that has been talked about a lot. Dr. Michael has really put this as an effort that he has been focusing on, and I will say there are times Dr. Michael will look at Stacy and I and say, "We need to find another classroom for pre-K." We just kind of feel like a deer in headlights, like, "Okay, we'll find it." But we always do, and we're working through it, and we're excited to offer that. Just to give you a picture of where we were from the beginning of this school year and where we are now, at the end of 2016 and 17, we offered access to seven hundred and thirty-five students across fifteen schools. The yellow represents half-day, so we had five hundred and fifty-five of those spots were half-day, and a hundred and eighty of those spots were full-day. Just in this year alone, we were able to expand that access to an additional ninety students, but however, the bigger part of that, if you notice, that has totally shifted to now seven hundred of those spots are full-day spots. That is a tremendous amount of work. We have doubled a lot of our classrooms to offer that full-day access, and we've noticed that our full-day access and our full-day pre-K programs has really been making the true impact. And, again, this has also expanded then to twenty of our schools, so we went from fifteen to twenty schools, ninety additional spots, but increased that full-day access. With the continued efforts that Dr. Michael has really kind of put in front of us and said, "This is what we need to get done." We've taken this as a role and as a mission for ourselves, and we hope that next year we're able to open up capacity for a thousand students with access at all elementary schools heading into the eighteen, nineteen school year.
Any care available for any questions you might have?
And I may have missed this, and I apologize if I do. Are we working at all with private pre-K organizations? I know that at the state level, there's still talk about, you know, it's got to be, we're not going to be able to do it for everybody, but we can get more and more kids because we work, you know, public schools and private pre-K organizations. Do we have any connection with the private pre-K providers?
Absolutely. A lot of the partnerships that we have include private partnerships and private childcare providers. Kelly's also offered some workshops at the HCC program and various other locations in the fall. We're both presenting at, I guess it would be a conference, an early learning conference at HCC, that really their target audience is private childcare providers, so we definitely work on building that relationship with them as well and sharing the necessity and the skills needed for school readiness.
I would very much, you know, like to see, or somehow if you can show me how, what you're doing during the course of a day with, you know, a full day with four-year-olds, basically. I mean, how does that day work out? I mean, that would be of interest to me at some point. I mean, just curiosity. I don't like to come into classrooms, and I don't like to bother teachers, but I'd like an opportunity to have an idea of what that full day looks like, what goes on.
Yeah, walking into a four-year-old classroom, it's an experience, and it's a lot of fun, so you'd enjoy it. So anytime, you're welcome to. However, we've actually had that discussion with principals over the course of this year as we've expanded to full day, what that looks like, what it sounds like. A lot of it goes back to the idea that instruction can be done through developmental appropriate play and interactions with kids. A lot of learning in a four-year-old brain happens with just simple interactions and modeling appropriate interactions and through discussions, hands-on, there's a lot of movement, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of time sitting down. The kids are active and moving, and they're getting that opportunity to be socially interactive and seeing what it looks like at that age to be developmentally appropriate.
How about, Matt, just out of curiosity, I mean, do you guys, do they have four-year-olds, five-year-olds? I don't know. I mean, is there nap time or any time that that happens anymore? I mean, let's face it, you know, they might be excited and great for a few hours, but they need some downtime, too.
The full-day classrooms build in a rest time at the end of the, closer towards the later part of the day. However, it's interesting, what we found is as we've expanded to more full-day students, not all four-year-olds access that rest time. There's a lot of four-year-olds that have energy throughout the whole course of the day. So what we do is we've been working with principals and teachers to identify students that if they need that time for that downtime to rest and have that opportunity to do that, please give them that access to do so. But if there are kids that are just sitting there, eyes open, kind of wandering around and not been able to rest, engage them in an activity, because there are four-year-olds that just can't rest. So we engage them in some activity and just in small group opportunities. So we do have that built into the schedule. Some kids access it, and some kids do not.
It's just once a day?
I think when my grandson went, he's in the first grade now, and he went to all-day pre-K, and what they did was they phased it out in a certain block of time in the first marking period, and then it would get shorter, and then shorter, and then they phased it out, the last marking period, so that they were...
Kindergarten-ready.
Kindergarten-ready.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I mean, part of what, part of our task, the task Stacy and Matt and Kelly with, is looking at our all-day program. While we've had, obviously, a hundred and eighty full-day slots up to this point, I mean, it's been a significant change for many, many of our teachers to go suddenly from, even, most of it happened mid-year, you know, as we get into September, then October, we make changes in January. You know, you're used to teaching a half-day program, and suddenly you're all at once teaching a whole-day program. So we have some work to do in a positive way with a lot of our staff that have been used to the half-day program. But I've had the opportunity to visit a lot of our pre-K sites, but in there when the lights are out, students are all, you know, heads down and laying out, they have cots and mattresses or, you know, cots, cots would be wrong words. Some of them actually have a cot. They lay out and taking a nap or rest or whatever. Also had the opportunity last week, was that last week or was it this week? So everything's running together. Young man came up and tugged at my trousers and was asking me something. I didn't quite understand him. I asked him again, he said, "Can you sit down?" And I thought, "Well, I can sit down. I don't know if I can get up, but I can sit down." And Kelly happened to be in the room, and he wanted to, we were playing with cups, and it was one of the collaborative things that they do, is they build towers and things like that with cups, working with another student. So I was trying to see if we could alternate, you know, placing the cup down and getting their tower built, so that was an interesting experience for me. But there's just a lot of energy, a lot of excitement. There's a lot of strategic play and just a lot of opportunities, I think, at one time were pretty natural in homes and maybe less so now, particularly with some daycare things as you're trying, it's just different. So this is very structured and unstructured and very purposeful play, and it's an exciting place to be. When you go in, you don't want to leave. All the way from breakfast time, which is a very interesting experience with four-year-olds, up through the end of the day. So I'm really excited about the program. We've obviously increased access. Now we need to work on the quality of our programs, but it is not like drag your four-year-old and get started on calculus-type experience at all, so.
I have a question about the terminology that's used on the prior care experience and readiness. I'm understanding that pre-K means our pre-K program.
Correct.
And I think I have an understanding of what non-public nursery schools would be, and I know what Head Start is. So the three others, home and formal, family childcare, childcare, how do you differentiate between those? They sound very similar to me, and I'm just wondering.
Right. So the difference between childcare and family childcare is basically just a number. So above a certain number, they then become a childcare center. Below that number, it can still be considered a family childcare center. So if the number, I don't know the number right offhand, I'd have to look, but if it exceeds a certain number, then it has to be a licensed childcare facility. Otherwise, it would be licensed as a family childcare center. The home and informal care additionally is more like one student with a grandparent, one student with mom. That's more of a one-on-one experience.
Okay.
And not necessarily a formalized instruction as the other two would be.
Okay. Thank you.
John, how many students are typically in a pre-K class, in our pre-K classes?
Twenty.
Twenty?
It's, we have, that's why we have a teacher in the IA, so it's a ten-to-one ratio.
There's no other questions? Again, I want to thank Stacy and Matt and Kelly. This year has been a bit of a whirlwind. They kind of had blank looks when I kept coming to them the first couple of times when I told them we were going to expand pre-K in October, and I guess maybe later towards December and in January, but they pretty much knew when I knocked on the door what I was there for more recently. So I'm excited. We have more programs to start this fall. As Matt indicated, we were fifteen schools, now we're going to be twenty. I'm hoping we'll try to make some other sacrifices or whatever, but I'd like to see us in all twenty-five schools, have at least one full-day pre-K in all twenty-five schools next year.
Thank you for the important work you're doing.
Can I ask, very quickly, and I know we're dragging on, you guys were down at the State Department today?
Yes, the Judy Center, our local Judy Center, was asked to represent the State Department today because of being recognized as a model across the state for the today because of being recognized as a model across the state for the Judy Center work.
Apparently, it went pretty well. My spies down there told me that you guys did a nice job.
I went down, it went very well. Kathy Kerns presented and did an excellent job. There's a lot of partnerships through the Judy Center, a lot of work that they have out in the community, really have many, many branches out there that we're accessing supports for families and getting into homes as much as we can to support them.
Send my congratulations and thanks.
Well, thank you.
Again, thank you for the important work that you're doing. You hit the ground running, you've kept running. Keep trying. What you're doing is making an impact, and we're ever so grateful for that. So thank you.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. You've got one more.
I have one more.
Imperation.
Yeah. When the wellness policy was most recently updated, you know, we were certainly looking at challenges we were having with childhood obesity. I just saw a report today, a new report came out, childhood obesity from ages two to 18, I think it was, maybe it was two to 21, has increased in the United States from 14% to 18%. So we're going to remain concerned about childhood obesity, certainly our issues of inclusion, allergies with students, those types of things. But we reflected on feedback that we received from a variety of folks on the wellness policy. And I went back to our co-chairs, and we also have our intern with us this evening, I'll let them introduce themselves, went back to the co-chairs and through Jeff, just asked them to review our policy and see if we could make some changes due to unintended consequences of the policy. So staff's here to report on that tonight, we'll be signing that regulation or releasing that soon. So I'll turn it over to Eric.
Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Michael, and fellow members of the board. We're here tonight to talk about the updates to our regulation, ADF-R, which is our wellness regulation. And I'm going to give a little bit of the historical background, but before I do that, we wanted to introduce fellow members at the table. Mike Embly is supervisor of food and nutrition services, new to us this fall, so we welcome him. And also, we have Julie Harris, who is an intern with Mike in the food and nutrition services, so we welcome her tonight, and we're glad that she's with us. So the history with regards to this regulation, in July of 2016, federal regulations were updated and required schools to look at their wellness policy and make changes to fall in line with the regulations. Primarily, our regulation, when we looked at ours, the language was really the thing that was lacking. The new regulations and guidelines call for stricter language. Ours were essentially recommendations or encouragements. We encourage you to use healthy snacks, but it didn't really say you needed to use healthy snacks. So last school year in 2016, 17, we got to convene a wellness committee, at that time as co-chair by myself and Jeff Prue, who at the time was supervisor of food and nutrition services. That committee was made up of dieticians, school nurses, school administrators, teachers, students, parents, and we also had representation from student services and school counseling. We looked at the, we looked at the language, our current language made changes. The policy was passed May of 2017, and then the regulation was implemented in September of 2017. As Dr. Michael had said, we looked at the feedback later in the fall. We met, I think, twice in November and once in December to evaluate feedback. And as you might imagine, the feedback was both positive and negative. Feedback was from community, parents, as well as school staff and administration. And what we did find was there was some unintended negative consequences. Obviously, you know, as we said, the intention was to take sugar away from students, provide more healthier snacks, but when we looked at the language, the language really said, "No snacks. No snacks is rewards." So what we kind of did is we looked through the evaluation, really three things came up front. One is teachers wanted flexibility. The unintended consequence one was, as we looked at students with snacks, some students have an early breakfast and then a late lunch, and those students, particular younger students, may get hungry at that time, or the reverse of that, where they may have an early lunch and it's a long time before dismissal. Teachers did not have flexibility to provide a snack, a healthy snack of any type for a student that may be hungry. Principals were also looking at times when they were bringing people into the school, particularly morning, a lot of times when you're doing celebrations or activities, there's refreshments provided. Those were eliminated while with the language that was in the regulation at that time. So principals were really looking at something, how can we provide an opportunity here? Because again, there was no lang, excuse me, there was no room for snacks. And then students, along with some teachers, were really looking at things connected to curriculum. Think more like along the lines of our foreign language. We want that multicultural experience. A lot of that revolves around the different foods that cultures have. And a lot of that experience was just that, providing different opportunities to taste food and utilize food within the curriculum. So the language, of course, did not allow for that. So as a result, these things kind of came forward along with the traditional, there was a lot about the celebrations that schools traditionally have around certain holidays and those type of things. But again, we heard from parents that said, you know, "We understand the limitations on sugar, but at this point, there's no opportunity to even have healthy snacks." So that was the feedback we got, and as we looked at the feedback, then we started to make revisions. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Embly, who is going to talk about those revisions.
So that leads us into, just after the holiday break, Eric and I met and talked a little bit about where we are in the process and evaluated that feedback, you know, and it was a lot of feedback to go through. Ironically enough, while we were in the middle of our meeting, two parents had showed up here at central office and were asking to speak to someone about this exact topic. So what a better time. We went out, met with them, and it really reinforced everything that we were currently working on. They were very reasonable in the things that they were asking for and in line with the new regulation. So we developed the proposed language that really addressed all the concerns and provides options with that regulation. We reconvened the wellness committee on January 22. We had sent out proposed regulations to the entire committee and asked for each person to come prepared with feedback one final time before we made final changes. After we heard the feedback from the committee members, Eric and I met again and developed what we have presented to Dr. Michael as an updated proposed regulation. The new wellness regulation 2018 allows principals up to four school-wide celebrations per year with flexibility on food and beverages to students. And again, the emphasis is on up to four. If a principal decides that two would be sufficient for their building, they may do so. And that, again, is no limitations on the food and beverage. Allows for special breakfast events before the school day, such as moms with muffins and dads with donuts to occur without counting as a celebration. Again, the feedback we heard about such events was it doesn't encompass the entire school. It encompasses a target group, and we felt that giving them that flexibility was important. It also allows food to be used as a reward if it meets smart snack standards, and we'll talk about smart snack standards in Julie's presentation. In this particular line item, it also allows for teachers, principals, nurses, whoever feels that a student may potentially need food in their body. And we have a lot of students that come to school extremely hungry, that breakfast that we provide at school may just not be enough, and for whatever reason, they may determine that that student needs something additional. There may be behavior issues that the professionals deem that providing a food item would help that child through the day. I just had a message about two hours ago from our homeless coordinator expressing a desire to provide snacks to students, and she gave me an example of one of her students that had a long commute after school, and she currently was not able to provide that student. So every, with every corner we turn and we hear from folks, we really feel strongly about the revisions that we've made. Lastly, the new regulation would allow food to be used as part of an educational activity in the classroom, and there's multiple examples of different teachers that wanted to do an event and felt very strongly about utilizing food in some way to create that activity that really connected the student with the activity. So after all that, we really looked at what's next and what are we missing, and we really wanted to improve the communication process as we look to roll this out and provide resources. And I'll turn it over to Julie at this point.
Yes, as Mr. Embly mentioned, communications was really important to us, and so I was tasked with developing some resources and communications around not only the guidelines, but also on smart snacks and how to help parents and teachers implement these new policy and regulations. And so the first one that you'll see on the screen is the Q and A, and this is just a sampling of a longer document, and these questions were compiled based off of questions that the team has received over the past month. We saw some themes, we saw some reoccurring questions, so we thought that this would be a helpful document to have. The question-and-answer document answers questions like, "How many celebrations can a school have?" and "What kind of snacks can be shared and used at those celebrations?" And this will be a living document, so as the team continues to have more questions and as this goes into place, we'll obviously get more questions and we'll have to update this, and we'll be able to host this FAQ on a new portion of the website that I'll be mentioning shortly. So then the next document and resource that I created with the team was talking about smart snack resources. So as you know, smart snacks is a federal guideline that enforces what type of snacks and what type of snacks should be utilized in the classroom and shared with students. And so this guideline walks you through what the wellness regulation includes and what those smart snack standards are. It also provides three different ways of identifying what smart snacks are, and so that when a teacher has an opportunity to share snacks with students, they know where to look for and how to identify if those snacks meet smart snacks regulations. As well as, we did develop two lists for teachers and parents to purchase smart snacks. So we went through lots and lots of snacks, not only available at Walmart and Target, Amazon, but also available from food and nutrition services that parents and teachers can be reassured that they meet smart snack standards. So they can go and purchase these items, and they don't have to do the legwork that's already been done for them. And then lastly, we developed a video which will be shared on the website. The website page will be on the Washington County Public School webpage, and also there will be a wellness email that parents and teachers and members of the community can send their questions and answers to.
So in closing, I think, you know, we took a hard look at this, listened to the community, and made some revisions, and I think the revisions we made and put into the language does a couple of things. It meets the needs and wants that the community was asking for, but also allows us to remain in compliance with federal law.
Staff, would you like to answer any questions or appreciate their efforts in pulling together the revisions and working with the committee and things, so?
Yes, Mr. Heidner.
I appreciate your efforts. This still doesn't do it for me. I'm sorry. You know, there's holes in this. There's just so many things I don't get, you know? Four celebrations, up to four celebrations, what's that mean? I'm not sure what that means. And it has to be school-wide? If you're going to do a celebration, why is that? Why can't a teacher have, you know, some discretion of a celebration that they may wish to have during the course of the year? Said before the school day, if I remember correctly, the original language, the school day starts at midnight, just after midnight. So when does that happen? You know, if it's after, you know, if it's midnight, you can't do anything anymore.
That's a federal definition.
Well, that's, it may well be a federal definition, but that makes no sense to me. You know, that's, you know, the school day starts at midnight? I mean, there's just a lot of stuff. I mean, I, you know, there are things that kids looked forward to, you know, in the past and probably still do, you know? Do I think there should be celebrations every day? Of course not. I'm not looking for that. But I mean, you know, if you want to celebrate birthdays, it doesn't have to be on that day, it could be a month. Okay, we're going to have a birthday month. You know, we'll get some cupcakes somewhere where they work. And I look at the smart snacks, and with all due respect to the federal government, if that's the crap that they're, you know, telling me there's a smart snack, you know, they haven't looked at much as far as nutrition is concerned either. You know, they say taking sugar out, which obviously you want to cut back a little bit on sugar, but, you know, there's something in some of those foods that replace the sugar. What is it? It could be equally harmful to a young person or an adult or anyone else. Cinnamon toast, crunch cereal bar, you know, I'm just looking, elf chocolate graham cracker? You know, come on, guys, that's just white cheddar cheese popcorn. I mean, what's the cheese? The cheese is an artificial flavor. You know, I'm not thinking that that's the greatest stuff you want to put in your kid's body. So, you know, it's just, it doesn't do it for me. I don't, I'm sorry, I apologize. I guess I'm stuck with it. Did we vote on that originally?
Well, the actual items that are listed are federal.
I understand that, and it's crap, but that's beside the point.
We voted on the policy. We voted on the policy, we did not vote on regulations.
We got a set of regulations sent out.
We don't vote on regulations.
I understand that, I understand that, but the regulations, whatever, I don't, you know, it doesn't do it for me, guys. I apologize. You're not going to change my mind, because in this particular area, I'm hard-headed. You know, I want kids to have fun occasionally, you know? I don't see a whole lot of chances here.
Received a lot of comments about the wellness policy this year, a lot of parents and teachers that were unhappy with the way things were, so I'm really happy to see that celebrations are back in the schools. I think that's a wonderful thing. I do think kids do try, should try to eat healthy, and I'm not real happy with some of these smart snack compliant food options either. I wouldn't eat them, but that's just me. But I do want to thank you for updating this policy. I think parents and staff and schools are going to be very happy with the changes that you've made. So thank you.
If we put it out there and we continue to have feedback, what happens? If it's negative, what happens then?
I'll take that. I guess I'm the historian on the subject because I've been with wellness since 2004. You know, the regulation, as Mrs. Fisher mentioned, it's superintendent regulation, so it's not necessarily voted on by the board, it's sort of a living, breathing document. So I think as the community provides feedback, positive or negative, it's an item that we could continue to reevaluate, continue to work through the wellness committee. It's to be an active committee that's not only setting, you know, a policy precedent, but also reviewing compliance and providing feedback and providing guidance to the board and to the superintendent. So we could continue to take it through that process. You know, I think the sense on the smart snacks is from midnight to 30 minutes after the school day, the federal government of the school day with the federal definition of the school day, it has to be a smart snack compliant item to be sold to students. Our approach was if we are giving it to students, shouldn't we follow that same rule of thumb? So that's why the committee took the approach that they did on that particular item. But that's something that the committee could continue to reevaluate if that is the wishes of or the superintendent and the community.
I think at this point, we've found a good balance, and I think we need to roll out the new regulation and the Q and A and work through it and see how it goes for a while. I'm not inclined to, I think the original intent may have gone too far, but I think the intention of the policy was appropriate or regulation was appropriate, and I just think we just need to continue to find the right balance. I think this is a great start and may well be the perfect balance. and may well be the perfect balance. I don't know. But we'll continue to look at it. We'll ask the wellness team to continue to evaluate the success of the policy and regulation and advise as necessary. So if there are no other questions, that completes my report.
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
I'm pretty sure.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. We'll move on to personnel action. First item under consideration is a vote on decision in order 2018 dash 001. Good evening, Mr. Trotta.
Good evening. I'm requesting the Board of Education's determination with regard to case number 28 dash 001. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to adopt decision in order 2018 dash 001.
Thank you, Mrs. Murph. Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Any questions or discussion? Okay. Motion is for approval of decision in order 2018 dash 001. All in favor? Okay, unanimous. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Dr. Bishop, move on to personnel action.
Good evening, everyone. As discussed earlier in closed session, there are several staff changes for your review. At this time, I ask for your approval of today's personnel actions.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Any questions for Dr. Bishop? The motion is on approval of the personnel action as discussed earlier today in closed session. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. And that brings us then to reports to the board, our board member committee reports. Mr. Ida, would you like to begin down there?
Yes, HR did meet this morning shortly, for a short period of time. We were given information on the efforts of our human resources staff to, on recruiting and, you know, getting the types of teachers that we need coming year.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
Policy committee actually is going to meet tomorrow at 9:15. We will be discussing updates of policies governing homework, promotion and retention of students, and teaching about controversial issues. That's 9:15 tomorrow.
Thank you. Mr. Bickford?
It's like a meaty meeting. The Board Finance Committee is meeting this Friday at 1 o'clock. We'll be in the Board Finance Committee room. The biggest priority will be the consideration of our second quarter budget adjustments.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Mrs. Murph?
Current and instruction did not meet this month. We will not meet until the end of next month.
Thank you. I'd like to do a very brief report from the LRT. Members of the LRT, Dr. Michael and Mr. Trotta attended MABE's Legislative Day. And following the luncheon, we did have some members of our delegation pop in during the luncheon and we had some conversation. But following the luncheon, Mrs. Cade had made some arrangements for us to visit Senator Bates, Senator Pinsky, Chief Legislative Officer Chris Shank, Delegate Anne Kaiser, and Senator Ron Young. And in those meetings, we discussed our, oh my, I just went brain dead here for a minute. We discussed our reportable offense bill. And with Chris Shank, we discussed our downtown urban planning project. So I would also like to report to you that yesterday, I attended the MABE Legislative Committee meeting. And at that time, the group voted to support our reportable offense bills. Those are House Bill 1702 and Senate Bill 1147. I understand that our other bills that our delegation has put in for us, the repeal of the special law governing the term of office for the superintendent, the repeal of the law that requires Washington County to have an advisory school design review committee, and the reportable offense law that I had mentioned previously. All those bills have been out of rules and assigned to committees. So things are moving along at a rapid rate. So that's my report regarding legislative response. And we'll move on then to miscellaneous business, future agenda items. You have a list of future agenda items published in the packet that you received. If there's anything additional that you would like to see added, please let me know, let Mr. Stauffer or Dr. Michael know, and we'll bring that up to the Agenda Planning Committee. Everyone's receiving the calendars that are tentative that list our meetings going forward several months. So I pay particular attention to those with the understanding that things get added and things are removed from time to time. So if there's nothing to be added to any future agendas this time by my colleagues, we'll move on to board member comments. Would you like to begin?
I'd like to thank Mrs. Katie Wolfensberger for inviting me to Eastern Elementary yesterday to come in and visit her classroom. She does a classroom meeting in the morning, and I got to participate with that. And I really enjoyed it and I hope to go back and visit them again soon.
Thank you. Mr. Bickford?
I found today very rewarding. We had a lot of unanimous votes throughout the day, which is fantastic. And it's also wonderful, you know, in this job, you get a lot of bad news, I know, and lots of difficult challenges. And to have a discussion of growing graduation rates and improving kindergarten readiness scores is just phenomenal. So I look forward to continuing the discussions.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Mrs. Fisher?
Just, it's been a long day.
It has been.
It's been meaty.
Mr. Ida, nothing. And nothing for me. So with that, we'll adjourn. Thank you.